Okay, it's 6:30. Now, call of meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge. Hold my sign.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start this evening with presentation for the Safe Sports Awards. Mr. John Alley and Christina Hughes to present.
Can I present from here or do you want me to come? I don't know where to present from, but from the center? That makes it easier.
Right in front of the Oscar.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Brad Rogers is the Director of Rehab at the hospital and he's my direct supervisor. And John Alley is our hospital CEO. So, I appreciate them both coming.
We're here for moral support to Christina and Rochester. Great job.
So, I'm excited to announce that the National Athletic Trainers Association has presented us with the first team Safe Sports School Award. So, this was about a two-year process working with our safety committee, which includes all the administrators from buildings, the school nurses, the maintenance staff, that whole group of people, to make sure that we have these 10 things in place. So, those kind of give you the 10 main categories. And this includes everything from making sure we have an athletic trainer on staff, to making sure that we've done an annual recrystal of our emergency plans, that we have the defibrillators are being checked, that the fields are being maintained, all those things. So, by achieving all of these things, really, we're providing the safest possible environment for athletes to compete. So, it's a big deal and congratulations to the school and hospital for getting all these things done.
And I want to personally thank everybody. This is just an indicator of the great people that I'm surrounded by. Mr. Alley and I were just speaking back in the back corner about how terrific you are and I shared that not only for our students, but personally, you helped out during a summer that was very trying for our family. But John, I think, hit the nail on the head when he shared when we put differences aside of who's supposed to be responsible for the batteries or who's gonna take this on and just know that we're doing it for the students. Everybody can come together for the community. So, thank you all for your support and your help and bringing this to fruition and surrounding our students by the best.
So, we'll have the banner to display and I think ultimately it's gonna end up in the gym. We're gonna try to get it on the football field for this Friday night. And then this logo, the Safe Sports School Award logo, we're now allowed to use that on our website and our letterhead and it's on my email signature and all those things. So, this is a three-year award and will reapply in 2019.
Thank you for your hard work and spent.
Yes, thank you.
It's good to know safety is a priority for our students. Thank you very much.
Mr. Alley said he has a board meeting tomorrow, so I gave him permission to leave. So, one long one tomorrow may be enough.
Yeah.
Did you gentlemen have anything you would like to add or something?
Christina really spearheaded the whole thing, working with Mr. Health and now our new athletic director here as well. They just worked really hard for the last three years making sure that they organize everything, make sure that we all show up when we need to, to make sure that we're doing the walkthroughs together. Anything that we needed or that she's needed, she's kept us really up on everything. So, we're just really happy that she's with the schools, working as a representative for Woodlow.
Jim, thank you as well for your hard work and all of that.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to consent items. Minutes of the July 25th regular board meeting, certification of the July 25th executive session, and minutes of the August 10th study session. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Jenny and second by Sandy. You have a discussion on paper. Through both claims. Val?
So, tonight, we've, on the docket is approval of claim number 9833 to 10,300. Total is $894,933.94. We did find a correction that needed to be made this afternoon. One of our defenders is new and the name that was put in needed to be corrected. In your docket, it's in as Innovation Modular Solutions, but it should actually be Innovative Modular Solutions. It's the rental due for the new temporary unit that's at Columbia. So, my apologies for that. It'll get corrected. It will be correct on the check when it does go out, but on the claim docket, it was, it's listed incorrectly. But outside of that, yeah, we've got $894,933.94 on claims. Payrolls total, let's see, on August 5th, it was $309,713.74. And on August 19th, which is the first payroll of the 17, I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself, 16, 17 year, is $351,862.13. Fund reports. On the general fund, we started with $293,519.65. We had $983,024.58 worth of receipts. Months-to-date expenses total $871,686.58. And our ending cash balance is $404,857.65 to general fund. Debt service, we started with $1,737,774.55. We had $8,663.44 worth of receipts. And no expenditures for July, leaving us an ending balance of $1,746,437.99. Capital projects, we started with $1,283,165.78. We had $4,549.1 cents worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were $100,770.92, leaving us an ending cash balance of $1,186,943.87. Transportation fund, we started with $1,094,340.13. We had $2,706.39 worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were $20,733.80, leaving us an ending cash balance of $1,076,312.72. Last but not least, on bus replacement, we started with $346,434.78. $536.73 worth of receipts. No expenses. We've got a couple buses that are coming, so we're expecting that anytime now. So, any cash balance was $346,971.51. Any questions on the fund reports that I just ran through for you?
Val, I know that usually in the fund reports, the self-insurance fund isn't listed there. We're just discussing that. And I noticed in the claim socket that there had been some movement to move over. So, has that roughly, do you remember, is that coming out about even right now or are you gaining in that?
It's, it's on a month-by-month basis. As we begin the new plan here, we're definitely being more mindful of that, a new process that we're going to be transitioning to, or not a new process, but a process to be more mindful of our, is definitely watching that and being more proactive when it comes to needs and things like that. So, when it comes to, you know, general fund, the corporation will have a per-plan contribution and then monitoring as the need, you know, as claims come in, because we are a self-insured fund, it is definitely something to be more mindful of. Every one, everyone's actions to be the smartest consumer and mindful of how those costs come in. It does affect the corporation and it does, it's really simple how everyone can play, you know, can be an impact on something, you know, as simple, but yet complex as health insurance. So, just really, you know, watching as we move forward with that, it's, we would like to see it grow to a more healthy point where it's not a cost concern at the end of the day.
And I want to give Clint Gardner credit. We have really started opening up communications with our CTA and trying to explain even with the administrative team and with the teachers what it truly means to be self-funded, that once those deductibles are hit, it's Rochester Community Schools that picks up the remainder of those balances up to X amount of dollars, it's $7,000 individual stock gap loss and then more for the district. But it's just that open communication and I believe that our CTA is really starting to grasp and the teachers are really starting to understand what that means and to be more mindful of. As are we. It's really difficult to budget and plan for because, God forbid, you don't know what those expenses are gonna be, but when they do come through, we need to make sure that we are growing that line item. And so, we are intentionally trying to do that in good faith.
So, is that a separate fund or it's a line item in the general fund?
It's a separate fund.
Okay. That might be helpful to add to the under forty.
Absolutely.
I appreciate the information you have in those fund reports, Val. I'd keep it direct.
From there, I can hop over to the budget presentation. Not sure if we wanted to do, to approve these pieces. We're, we're doing it all as one.
We'll just approve the financial, then we'll do the budget.
Sounds good.
Any other questions on the financial report? If not, need a motion to approve financial or super.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Brad and second by Lisa. You have a discussion on paper. Okay, we'll move on to the presentation of 2017 budget.
It's coming up on you behind your screen there. So, I'm gonna take a step back into last year. There's a lot of changes that came down through the pike through the 2016 legislative session. Epietta Code 6-1.1-17-3 allows governmental entities to publish our Form 3, which is the official budget notice, you the gateway website. Well, combined, it'll, it'll help save some of those advertising costs and make things more transparent for taxpayers as well. However, the bus replacement and these capital projects fund plan, those are still gonna be advertised through, well, Rochester Sentinel and the Weekly Shopper as well. More updates for this year was another transparency piece. The goal was to provide schools, cities, and towns with more information in a more friendly manner. And this is just around year one of the year two for the next year for 2018 budget session or, you know, budget presentation is anticipated to be more of a detailed version than this year. This year, we received our assessed valuations literally a couple days ago. For next year, the goal is to have that established by June 30th and have that out to all the units first thing in July, which is when all, especially schools are typically working budgets, but when a lot of that preparation work takes place for units. Like I said, we've always already received our maximum levy budget for '17. And we can proactively prepare, you know, where necessary, even a lot sooner in the game, you know, if the assessed valuation, you know, drops tremendously, then we can start to do some of that proactive work during the last six months of the prior year versus, you know, 12 months of ensuing year. So, budget calendar, what the goal is, is August 31st, which is not this Wednesday, but the next Wednesday, the notice of public hearing will appear in Gateway and then bus replacement and CPF plans will appear with Rochester Sentinel and the Weekly Shopper. On September 19th, we'll have a public hearing. October 24th is, is the goal to have the budget adoption. The deadline to have our budget adopted and approved is November 1st. So, we're way ahead of schedule, you know, on schedule, I shouldn't say way ahead, but we're pretty good scheduled on there for October 24th for our adoption. And then November 2nd is when the CPF plan adoption will appear in the Sentinel and the Weekly Shopper. So, here's a recap of the last four years of year end balances for each of the four, I should say, five funds. Over the years, it's, you know, kind of grown, dropped a little bit, and then it looks like we, you know, kind of flat to it off on a total as a whole from '14 to '15. So, '16 budget review. Let's see, we've, this is just looking at, we went through the budget process last year. You know, this time last year, we were working '16's budget. And then in about January of '16, we had our budget, our, we received our '17 82, which is the formal piece of our budget of, this is how much education we can spend, this is how much we're gonna get in tax levies. And this is, so this is pretty much how it struck out after we advertised doing the same case we're doing right now. So, and debt service, we advertised a little over $3 million. We pretty much, difference of $585 on that side. CPF, we advertised 1.6, we got 1.4. Transportation, we received $764,000. We received $730,000. So, you know, overall, and the same with bus replacement, we were down $14,000 in bus replacement too. But overall, it's, this is, this is pretty much what DLGF, you know, like what the goal, even as all the taxing units, what the goal is, is to have all of that assessed valuation and information early and up so that we can have, you know, advertisers and accurate budgets as we, as we can. So, go to the next slide from there. So, moving into 2017, rainy day, this is a formality. You have to advertise that you're gonna spend it to receive the appropriations, which is your permission to spend. So, not that I look to, you know, be to, you know, or foresee the need to dip into those rainy day funds, we do have to advertise and go through that process to get those permissions. So, currently, right now, we have $119,417.78 in our rainy day beginning balance. And here's a yearly snapshot review. We started with $70,000. We got $48,000 in from the state that said that we had to apply that to our rainy day fund. We've not expended it, of course, and so that's our ending balance. So, and then rainy day projected revenues, again, you know, this is how much we're, if we're looking, if we're anticipating receiving more money, then we would want permission to spend more money. But at this time, we're not anticipating putting any money into the rainy day due to our self-insurance fund balance needs. So, history, general fund, state tuition support. This was another interesting piece as well, just the difference in the funding formula and enrollment of our students and things like that. Our estimated ADM right now that was submitted to the state back in May was $1,790, which is even an increase of $87,000 over prior years. So, that's a good move in the right direction. We'll have to wait and see how the September enrollment comes out to be for the final. That count date is on September 16th. So, any more students that enroll in before the 16th would definitely help out our district. So, projected revenues are coming in at $15,210,630. At this point, basic grant, we get summer school funding and we get a lot of other funding as well, and those are those totals that will get advertised through the gateway on the book budget site. And then from there, this is a grouping. What I've sent to you in your, through the board doc site is a detailed line-by-line-by-line. This is a grouping of six, it starts with $1,100. That's all of our kindergarten, elementary salaries and benefits and expenses from there. The $1,200 is middle school. $1,300, I'm sorry, $1,200 is specialized focus, but the $1,100, my bad, my apologies on that one. $1,100 is actually, it should be $11,000, I should say, is elementary, middle school, high school salaries and benefits and materials and supplies and everything else that goes into debt. $1,200 is specialized focused education. $13,000 adult basic. And then from there, it just goes down the gamut through all of those other programs. We go on to the next page, there's even more, where, you know, office superintendent, the principal salaries, maintenance of buildings and grounds, and athletic coaches' salaries and benefits. So, that all comes to about $15,331,270. That is gonna be advertised in our budget for those meetings. A couple more finalizing pieces that were, just wrapped up, our open enrollment, that's definitely for our health insurance, it's definitely a part that affects general fund. And then we do have a few more certified teacher positions to fill. A piece that is interesting as well is to keep in mind when you're budgeting for a calendar year for a school that doesn't, you know, of course, schools don't operate on calendar years. And of course, school finance funding does not operate on calendar years either. It's on a physical cycle. So, we do have 10 payrolls to wrap up for '16 and then 16 payrolls in '17. So, those, there's even 10 more payrolls in '17 that are accounted for as well in self-insurance. You know, that's probably something to be mindful of. Debt service, pretty much our revenues are pretty kind of dry. We get 99% through tax levies, or I should say 100%, but between property taxes and then other income from there that is other, I should say, PTRC, which is property tax replacement credit. So, $3,389,489. And then we have a breakdown of all of our principals and loans and all of our bonds and pretty much all of our debt in a nutshell. So, that total $3,431,970. Capital projects fund, we get, of course, quite a bit in tax levies and there's even other revenue that still comes in outside of capital projects fund. So, that's anticipated to be $1,727, I'm sorry, $1,727,260 for capital projects fund revenue. And what I did as well, I took the line-by-line detail and summarized it through the groupings that they're located within and to reflect our total allocations of $1,900,000 for expenditures. Sorry, can you back up real quick? Sorry. Sports facility does have $50,000 in there. Per statute, we can spend a percentage of our capital projects funds on sports facilities improvements, so that allocation is accounted for. That's just more of an FYI. Technology also plays a big part as well as maintenance of buildings for our capital projects funds, just keeping, keeping things right. Transportation funds, of course, again, credited through tax levies and then property tax replacement credits and, and there's another line in there as well through funding through other outlets and funding services. Projected expenditures are grouped again, just a summary page of those allocations. Transportation administration, that includes not only our transportation director, but also his secretary. Vehicle operation, our bus drivers and vehicle servicing and maintenance includes getting our buses fixed and filling them up and keeping them on the road with tires and such. And then, of course, entrance for the buses, our students and other transportation services such as the software they use to, the transportation department uses to make sure that all the kettos are picked up for their routes. Bus replacement fund, it's pretty self-explanatory. We get money to buy more buses and replace buses as they grow old and weary with lots of mileage. We get tax levies and property tax, property tax replacement credits as well. Anticipated $268,018 from there. And then in, on the flip side of it, for expenditures, we're anticipating $360,000. Now, if you notice on this one, there's more expenses than there are revenues anticipated. That's because we've got a cash balance that we're anticipating. We've got a little over $300,000 worth of balance right now and our buses are coming in at about $260,000. So, we'll have a cash balance to bring in and that will help offset the difference. From there, then here's another recap again of, you know, where we were, where we're coming in at and things like that. So, next steps for the budget process. So, today, what I'm looking for is to be approval on to advertise our 2017 budget. And from there, that will get uploaded into the gateway site and be viewable next Wednesday on the 31st. The bus replacement and CPF plan will be available for view through the Sentinel and the Shopper. Oh, yeah, we were good. You're on it, Scott. Thank you. And then from there, again, in September, we'll have our public hearing and then at the October board meeting, we'll, we're to adopt and approve. Any questions?
Thank you for grouping those expenditures. That is so helpful to see that. I like the detail there too, but it is nice to see that grouping.
It's a lot to look at on the detail, so.
Well, and I think that's very user-friendly then for anybody else who has any questions or wants to see.
Exactly. It means a little more things, so.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Val. Any other questions? Okay, so we'll need to have a motion to approve the starting process of adopting the budget presentation here tonight.
Come on.
Okay, motion by Jenny.
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. You have a discussion on paper. And motion by Carrie, send her. Then we'll move on to donations. To the Fulton County Solid Waste District, the Riddle, 2015-16 recycling, $300. Fulton County Chamber of Congress, RHS ban, participation in the bicentennial parade, $150. Sally's By the Shore, athletic department sells from the RHS Fall Sports Preview Night, $70.50. Fulton County Pack a Backpack. Columbia, extra school supplies donated, folders, paper, glue, crayons, pencil, gracer, pocket Kleenex. Tim and Candy Haze, RMS Letter Lounge, gum ball machine and foosball table. Sue Cash, RMS PBIS Store, diamond earrings. Brendan Downs, RMS Student Needs, miscellaneous clothing items. Booster Club, Athletic Department Rochester Memorial School Volleyball Uniforms, $1,025. Rex Reinhold, Athletic Department, shootout gun for basketball teams, $3,300. Boys Jet Basketball Boosters, Athletic Department Shootout Gun for Basketball Teams, $150. And Stephanie Bartman, RHS Library, Memory, Kay Gossett, for purchase of books, $15. Jola Gossett, RHS Library, the memory of Kay Gossett, for purchase of books, $15. Fulton County Soccer Association Athletics, soccer goals, $700. And Rochester Boys Soccer Athletics, soccer goals, $495. Are there any additions? Okay, we need a motion to approve the donations.
I move we accept those donations as listed.
Okay, motion by Lisa. Second by Steve. Any other questions on paper? And motion by Carrie, send her. And once again, we'd like to thank all the donors and everything else.
That list, you would always imagine, and rightfully so, that that list would get smaller and smaller, but in fact, it does and it continues to grow and maintain and it's just a testament to our community.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to information analysis, approval to purchase or trade gas hopper mower with 72-inch deck.
Val, do you have additional information?
I don't. I'm looking to trade in our current deck for a new one. We're getting a $3,000 allowance on our current one to apply towards the We're getting a three thousand dollar allowance on our current one to apply towards the purchase of the new one, and from there it will, well, it's a little hard.
Brian Stockberger just came to me and shared that there continually, it just gets to a point where you have so many hours on the mower, that those expenses are continuing the cost to maintain and to fix it is more than what should be necessary, and it's just time for that trade-in. We did talk about whether or not we felt like, I know later in our board agenda, we have items that we would like to try to auction off or sell, and the group consensus was we would get more in a trade-in value than we would trying to auction that off. And Rochester Ford New Holland has always been more than fair with us in regards to helping us out in that manner.
This is more just a procedural question. Curious, what made this rise to the level for board approval, because it's like thirteen thousand dollars or something?
The sell of the equipment. Do, I mean, I guess less than for myself, do every time we sell or trade in our school equipment, do we need that board approval?
Depends on whether it's budget that I have or not, it's in the budget, then the board's already approved it, it's separate item, we're against it, be aware of it.
Thank you.
Now, wait, there isn't any in the budget. Okay, so we'll need to, if there aren't any more questions, approval to purchase and trade in the old lawnmower. Brad, okay? Second by Don. Any questions? On paper? Hey, motion carries, send here. Okay, approval to purchase three D printer for the Rochester High School program. Joel Lowell is here, he could give some info on it.
We're, the engineering department uses the three D printer, Rep Prototype Machine, you know, almost beyond daily, every classroom uses it. Our current model has three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six hours on it. When I called to get quotes on it, they couldn't believe that we've had that many hours on it, to be honest with you, and it's still running. Most of the school corporations they sell to have somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand hours on it. Our machine is currently nine years old, it's just like a computer, you know, just using a computer for nine years. It's been a good machine, but it's kind of too upgraded and on. That one, currently we're going to the middle school, they don't have the demand, but we do. It's just like anything else, you know, we're all trying to compete for students across the area, and I feel like that's kind of backgrowing in the engineering organization, the Rep Prototype Machine.
About pregnant and raw, we would have the money in repair and replace for this item.
So which fund is it?
Repair and Replace.
From the capital projects, repair and replace, or is there a whole other?
It's its whole other repair and replace fund. I knew about it. A few years ago, there were funds established for this repair and replace fund, there was a resolution to enact this repair and replace fund, and that is what, for this type of purchase, is what it is to be used for the funds. Thank you.
So remind me, for it's a repair and replace, where does this come from, the general fund to go?
I wasn't able to identify that as much.
It doesn't go there every year, it's just there now?
No, it's always there. It was established, I can't, through the time that I've had with it, in making myself acquainted with this fund, as to where the funds came from, I've not identified that piece yet, but I have identified that it is, the funds in this, the money in this fund is to be, has been established for repair and replacement of equipment.
How much is in it?
I just laughed. There was all those lines of the budget that I tried to sense of that, so, but I will get that information. It's a healthy amount, but not super deep.
Like healthy. So this is more complete, huh?
Exactly, no, not at all.
Joel, what kind of projects do you do with this?
You know what, I don't want to tell anybody, so you understand what a three D printer is, everybody, whatever that is. Okay. So we start out with freshman class, and they do small projects, a lot of tensile testing, things that they create in their AutoCAD. All the way to their senior year, where they will actually build and go through a patent process of prototyping, you know. If you ever been through that process, that's where you use those examples, will actually build. I thought everyone needed to put a patent, but I wish I could give you just some examples. We use this with first revise, we make gear bearings, I made, we made spatula heads, we made gas can spouts. I'm just trying to think of the valid, we use it, like I said, we can use it all day, every day, it's hard to, kids all have different ideas, I mean, every kid has a different idea of what their answer should be.
Can we come in and watch you make something?
Absolutely, right right now.
Sweet. This is plastic, it makes it perfect out of the plastic.
Yes, plastic. I sent you, I wish I could be better, but Strass has figured out that they can make more money by eliminating the competition, and so you guys have those three bids in there. So I called trying to get three bids, there's only one company in the state in the end that can sell Strass prototype machines. The problem with, you can buy a twelve hundred dollar prototype machine, but it's kind of like buying, you know, a BB gun, you know, at a department store, it'll last about a day. So you want to buy something that'll last ten years, this is what this one's lasted. When we bought this, under date on, we live, shelf life of this one's been around ten years. Yep.
You said that the Object Thirty, which is the one that you recommend?
Yes.
Has a two-year warranty, so I assume that the one-year partner in Emerald Care and the one-year, and plus the one-year warranty do not run concurrent, one picks up after the other one's done?
That is correct. That's an educational package, just like any system working on a car, it is.
Okay, but they expect the machine to last ten years, and they warranty for one?
They run the, they run the, there's no default on the second one, the way I understand it. It's just a different company picks it up a second year.
What's the approximate cost of the resin that we use now on a yearly basis?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars. What's the probable cost of resin for this new machine per year?
Well, the advantage to the new machine is, and we have, the new machine, you've got to understand how software works, right now, when I build something, I say, all right, build. Whether I have three things, four things on it, okay, and a kid decides, you know what, that's wrong. I'm like, crap, there's nothing I can do, I just got to finish the build. The new machines, I can stop the build, I can delete that particular part, even if it's only halfway through, therefore I'm saving money, is that. Now, the resin on the new machines is half the price, so if I spend, in theory, now hold me in theory in this, I don't know, I do not know if this machine, the newer machine has, well, as I'm in the old one. The old machine takes two hundred and sixty dollars per unit, if you will. The new machine takes a hundred and thirty dollars per unit, supposedly the same building material, fifty-two cubic inches per walk, if you will.
All right.
And I'm able to stop the new machine mid-build, pull stuff out, delete builds as tight as I need.
So a six thousand dollar resin credit should carry us through several years?
I would suspect it will take us, if you want my, without knowing what bid, I would say two years. That's generally what I've been spending, I spend about fourteen hundred dollars, yeah, every year is what I spend.
So it should be less than, but this new?
In theory, but you've got to understand, I don't know what the startup costs, I don't know what the building, you know, I mean, what am I going to shoot through? You're talking about a brand-new machine that I don't know a lot about. That's the question. About fourteen companies.
Can you, do you have any idea about how many students we have in our engineering programs?
I do, I see a hundred and forty-two a day.
Great.
That number could be higher if I was to call myself.
Did you work on that? How about?
Yeah, we turn kids away, I know I teach two freshman, I don't know who to, we offered the IED class, so we did kind of call myself there.
Any other questions? Thanks, Joel. Okay, any questions? We'll need a motion to approve the purchase of the three D printer, as quoted.
So moved, second.
Okay. Motion by Don. So Brad, and Don, and Brad, second, okay? Any other questions? On paper? Motion carries, send here. Thanks again, Joel.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to sell tech items, weight room items, and piano.
We have included a list, and I want to thank Greg and Scott for providing this list to us. It's in, items that we no longer use. Those that Scott has listed in the technology area, I would respectfully recommend that, I work with Dan McCarthy, we had an online auction a year, two ago, and that seemed to go very, very well, and really helps with our maintenance staff. Before, when you have those public auctions, you have a lot of stuff left behind that we're still responsible for, those silent auctions that are well advertised, we did really, really well on. The weight room stuff, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm a little bit hesitant, the responsibility of selling some of that weight room, I'm wondering if we wouldn't get more just from scrapping it out? The permission, it seemed like a lot of it on the list was broken and not usable.
Obsolescent, unsafe.
So permission to scrap rather than sell. And then Luke and Wendy just shared, there's a piano at Riddle that they would like, they have three pianos there, one they are not utilizing, and they felt comfortable selling one of those pianos as well.
I made a motion that we scrap out the weight room, weightlifting equipment.
I looked at it as well, and I'm by no means an expert, but it's junk, and scrap prices are not that good, but at the same time, I think we would get less taking it through the process of a auction, and we'd be better off to do it through a scrap process.
I should let you make the motion.
You can make it, I mean, I'm seconded now, so.
Do you want a separate one for the piano, since we're going to sell it?
Well, we would also be trying to sell all of the technology equipment on that list as well. So the top list with all of the technology, I would propose doing a silent auction online, just as Dan McCarthy did, was that maybe two years ago when we did that?
I think it was down there, yeah.
And try to sell this technology equipment, I'm proposing scrapping all of the weight room, those areas from the athletic department, but also trying to do a silent auction on the piano.
Okay, well, I amend my motion to sell everything on this list, with exception on the weightlifting equipment, and that should be scrapped.
And I'm going to defer again to Mr. Marks, it's his house, I don't mean to step on your toes by offering that opinion, so.
Did you second the amendment?
I second that amended, last thing he said.
Okay, then motion by Don, and second by Brad. Any other discussion? On paper? Okay, motion carries, send here. Moving on to the approval, the Herman Getz, the HVAC bid.
I want to thank Terry, he spent time with us prior to this board meeting, sharing what those bids were, and exactly what that means to the board, to the community, to our school district, and he's going to recap some of that for us.
Before you ask.
I have one more. Oh. Here, here, mine.
Yeah, I should have another.
Where's her? I can give it to you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So as, as things said, like, we went through this in details, as I'm going to give this version, and a couple folks were out, so just ask questions as needed. So back on August ninth, we received three bids for the mechanical replacement project for the high school, and those three contractors were Hagerman, Herman, and Getz, and Wilhelm. Wilhelm, just to give you some background, Wilhelm was late coming into the game, and they were contacting us, calling us, or their subcontractors were calling us a week, week and a half ahead of time, asking us what they were supposed to bid. So there wasn't much effort from the general contractor in helping them understand what they were doing, so I think that explains their bid a little bit, in that they didn't know exactly what they were up against. Hagerman and Herman and Getz bids, all in all, were seventy-seven thousand dollars apart, so that's one point eight percent spread, which is a really good spread for a project of this size. So that means those two contractors included everything from our bid documents, with no concerns on our end that they've missed something. In the end, Herman and Getz was low with a base bid of four point two seven million, and then we'll go down this list and talk about alternates. The unit price numbers were just safety nets for us, if we had decided to do a couple more faucets or plumbing items, we know what those unit costs are going to be. Alternate item A1 is, again, a safety net for us. We ask for the bid bond information from contractors, and that tells us whether or not we're at risk with that contractor. If their bid bond is really high, that means they're either spread too thin, or they have insurance issues, so that helps us explain. That number, then alternate A2 is, is actually for the middle school chiller. During the design, we decided to go ahead and design a separate chiller system for the middle school and separate from the high school. Currently, the high school feeds the middle school under the parking lot, which is a long distance and a long way. Unfortunately, I have no way to tell you how much loss you have in efficiency in that system, but it can't be great. Jim Swank, all along, has told us how deep the pipes were buried when we redid the parking lot for the buses. A couple of years ago, we found out they're not so deep. So that tells me that that pipe probably gets a little hot, and so we will lose some of that cooling in the process of moving it all the way across the property. Alternate A3 is for controls for the newer part of the high school. The newer part being twenty-some years ago, but it's still the newer part. So we wanted to be able to put the entire building on the same HVAC control system, so we wanted a number to add that part of the building. Alternate A4 is for a generator hookup, that is for the whole building. That's for a semi, to basically bring a generator big enough to power the entire building in the event that the community loses power, and you guys become a shelter for the community. So that is a separate number, again, that came during the design, we decided to do that, so we could itemize that cost. The building will have a small generator, electrical generator for emergency lights and kitchen equipment, but that's for a couple hours, that's for a storm event, in which power comes back on, you don't lose any of those things, you have light to get out of the building. Alternate A5 is for duct cleaning. In the process of the design, we did some inspecting on the ductwork in the building originally, it's a nineteen sixty-five, and so it has dirt from nineteen sixty-five buildup in it, and we decided it's probably a good idea to get that cleaned out, since we're redoing everything else in the system. And then alternate A6 was to put the controls contractor in a competitive bid situation, we want to match the control system that's in this building, as well as going into Columbia, but without sole sourcing that same control system just for the high school and allowing that contractor to bid whatever they want, we put them in competition with others. That number, we found out from Herman and Getz, of the two hundred and eight thousand, was to basically leave the control system that's there in place, and that was not an option in our drawings, thus not an option for their alternate, so we're rejecting that one. So of those items, the big one is the middle school chiller and separating that system. Next summer, we've talked about this throughout the design process, we've talked about it in other meetings that we've had as a group. Next summer, the cooling in the high school is going to be shut off. We're going to lose it all summer long in order to do the renovation for the high school. In the process of doing that, if the middle school's not on its own system, it's also going to get shut off. We anticipated to move all activities out of the high school over to the middle school to allow summer activities to happen. You would not have cooling there either if we continue to maintain the same system where they're not separated. If we decide to elect to choose this alternate, we actually could have this chiller work done at the middle school prior to next summer, go ahead and have cooling in place, so that before we hit the summer months, the middle school work's already finished and out of the way.
And Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, you shared earlier in the study session, that there would be some cost savings in regards to what we needed to do at the high school in regards to unit size and framing and those types of things. Can you talk?
And so that, right now, you have a cooling tower that's on top of the high school, that's near the mechanical room, and then you have two ground-mounted chillers. We're going to eliminate the two ground-mounted chillers and put two chillers up on the high school in place of that cooling tower. If we decide to keep the middle school- If we decide to keep the middle school on the same system, those top, those two chillers get even bigger, and then the steel framing that's up there has to get bigger to hold it up. The building can hold it up, but the framing isn't big enough to hold those bigger units. So we designed to add more steel and, uh, increase that frame so we could put those bigger units up there. If we don't have to do that, separate, separate units over for the middle school, um, that'll reduce some of that cost, and that's what this number is in total. It's, uh, moving some dollars from the high school, move it over to the middle school, and at the middle school, those two units, there's two units, they'd be, uh, adjacent to the boiler room, so they're within feet instead of, I jokingly said a quarter mile earlier, I haven't, I've measured it, it's a pretty long way under the parking lot to get over there. But we're going to, we're going to gain that efficiency in that system because we're no longer transporting cooled water, chilled water underground, um, that far a distance. So, um, that, those units would be, uh, back there where the, the small electrical generator or gas power generator is now, as well as the gas meter, but it's going to be fenced in completely, so it'll be hidden, um, at least outside somewhat and, uh, and kind of tucked away. There's pine trees up there to help, help mask it and hide it. And at that point, you no longer are dependent on the high school to cool the middle school. Um, and it's not only in the event that we lose the cooling, if you have a power outage at the high school, you lost cooling to the middle school in that process. So this separates the two. We talked about it in the study session earlier. When the middle school was originally built, um, it was a low-budget project, obviously because of the building, they didn't have walls in it in, in the beginning. So it was probably, that was the thought, what's the least expensive option to get cooling to that building? To run pipe. So, um, we're trying to separate them completely so that the, the middle school becomes a standalone building.
So here's my four, my 4.27 million dollar question.
Sure.
We're going to have two bigger chillers to the high school replace the ones that aren't as big or as efficient now. Is that what you said, and I want to put words in your mouth?
Um, what, and to give you a little background, we talked about it earlier. Currently, you have two ground-mounted units, and you have a cooling tower. That one of those ground-mounted units actually isn't used very often at all.
Okay.
Not sure how it was engineered. Uh, Jim Swank informed me that one of those units is a backup when it's 90 degrees outside. We designed the new system only for the need for the building, for the middle school and the high school separately, instead of this extra, uh, capacity. They'll be totally separate, two units at the high school that are smaller, and two smaller ones at the middle school.
So here's my 4.27 million dollar question. With the two ones at cherry or capacity at high school, and a separate one at the middle school, so we don't have to use the two from the high school, where our rooms on the second floor are finally going to be cool enough so our kids don't come to me at 4 o'clock in the afternoon and practice and say, "Coach, it was 85 degrees." Is it going to fix that or not?
I'll tell you what I told you, it's going to be a whole lot better than it ever was. I can't make, I can't make complete promises, but right now, the biggest issue in the high school, the control system's a wreck.
Which is going to be fixed with this though, right?
It will be. And you'll actually have the capacity for the cooling. You go down in, you've been down in the, in the bottom, a few of you have been down in the basement, I think. Brad, potentially you were down there in the basement. You could blow dry your hair down there, there's so much leakage in that system. We're going to fix all those things in conjunction with those units, in conjunction, I mean, all in all, controls.
I know, Terry, and I believe it. I'm just saying, I've got kids and parents going to say, "Why is this on?" Hey, tell me to fix that, I'm okay. I mean, and you can tell me about blowing down below in tunnels.
Doing the best we can. Right, yeah, I, I can, it, we should be able to get control of the building to where you'll have cooling on the second floor, and it, so that every room is consistent. That's the plan. Instead of an 80-degree room and a 60-degree room, uh, it's the controls. They're, they're mess as well as all the inefficiencies in the system otherwise. I can't make complete promises, but you've asked me to promise, and I, the best I can do is, it's going to be 10 times better than it is now, is there's so many things wrong with it. It's, it's, it's a big mountain to climb, and the 4.6 million dollars should get it.
Should get it.
Yeah, should get, get the issues resolved.
Why at the beginning of next school year?
Beginning, um, then at the bottom of that breakdown, that they have to be done by December of 2017.
So we'll get a tool one way or another.
If we install, um, some alternates A2 at the middle school, does that mean we can reduce the equipment installed at the high school?
It will. It'll, we'll no longer have the two units on the ground that, that Jim has to maintain. We're taking the chain link fence down and actually fixing the, so that he can use that space. We'll get rid of the cooling tower, which we talked about earlier. Cooling towers are high-maintenance items. They have, uh, chemical mixtures and other things, and you have to have everything working perfectly in order to, for it to operate properly. And unfortunately, um, it was, the unit that's up there is actually from the early 90s, but it looks like a shipwreck. It has what we jokingly call barnacles growing off the side of it. So you're going to minimize the amount of maintenance and upkeep overall.
The Herman Getz, uh, bid, that, if we were to install the middle school, there would be a reduction somewhere in this column.
This, that number includes everything as the trade-off, so that, um, that $367,000 accounts for the reductions at the high school and the additions at the middle school. It's all in. The way we wrote the alternate, I'd have to let you read it to see how it's all-inclusive.
Okay, alright.
So the only additional savings would be inefficiencies, which of course we can't quantify, but the, but the alternate already has that.
Everything included.
Trade-off.
Okay, this would take the functionality of the tunnel away. We wouldn't, the tunnel wouldn't be anything anymore, right?
No, there, there, that's a, people think that there's a tunnel between the two schools, and there's not a tunnel. The tunnels, the story of the tunnels, you actually have tunnels under a bunch of your buildings, but I'll keep it simple. There are tunnels under the high school that go, and I could show you in the drawings after the meeting, that go completely from end to end, and you can walk through them. That, those tunnels are, that's the ductwork under the building. It's blowing cold air through concrete block tunnels from one end to the other, and that's how they're.
High school should build a school.
Nope. No, from, so the, so how they get cooling to the middle school, because pipes in the ground, and it's just, it's moving cold water from one, one building to the next. So imagine, just like in your house, you're up on the second floor of your house, you turn on the hot water in the basement, and you wait, and you wait. Well, it's the opposite. We're sending that cold water over to that other building, and that, that ground's hot, and so you're, you're taking that cold out of the water as it moves all the way across the parking lot. So we're losing efficiency. We should see improved efficiency, and eventually we'll get new controls at the middle school as well one of these days, and, but they don't have nearly the issues you do at the high school because of the second floor and the other things that Brad talked about. But, no, I get it. I, I was in a school building for another school system on Friday, and my whole team was, and, um, it was over 85 degrees, and it's unbearable. It, I can't imagine how these kids learn anything if they're worried about sweating all over their work in front of them, so.
Brad, I do have a question. I'm going to put Brad on the spot here, and Skeeter on the spot here. We had a meeting around that alternate, uh, A4, the generator hookup, when we were talking about wish list items and necessities to keep the buildings going in, in the case of an emergency. And so my understanding is that the 62,800 would be the hookup system if we had a catastrophic loss and we had to bring in state units, and, and so my question to, to you gentlemen in law enforcement is, if something were to happen in the community, I want to make sure that we're able to support the community in whatever their needs are. Would we, would we need that hookup, or if they were bringing in that equipment, would they have the means to set that up for our community?
The way it happened out of Hurricane Sandview is at Atlantic Beach, which is a barrier island, and I'll give you a little bit of background here on Long Island. They brought in a huge generator, which we reallocated, my attorney's here, so I have to use those terms. And there were local people that could hook that up. For $62,000, I can't sit here and represent the taxpayers and say, "We should spend $62,000 to make it easier on the federal government," when we have a backup generator that can keep things cold and things like that. If FEMA were to bring a huge generator with a thousand-gallon diesel tank in, we could get a Duke or a RMC or somebody to come do that. And Terry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I've seen it happen, and with Bill at the FEMA, and say, "We did this for you." I can't see morally or ethically spending $62,000 to keep the federal government happy.
No, that was my question, and I know we had that, we did have a meeting on what we, the necessities we discussed, and I, so we asked Terry to do that, and, and I thank you, Terry, for bringing that number to us. It was kind of one of those that we wanted to see.
I'm one voice, Terry, Skeeter, what, I mean, what do you guys think? I don't.
Yeah, we discussed it earlier. I, I've designed a lot of these systems, or thank goodness, never seen it used because we haven't had it, uh, a catastrophic event. My concern is that, as I mentioned earlier, is if, if it's, if, if you have, let's just say you have a tornado come through Rochester, it only affects Rochester, fine, but if you have something affect three other communities, and they all need that generator, who's getting it first? Probably who can hook it up the fastest? It's just, it's, it's just, um, I think it, it is an extra, uh, but if you are, the high school is the sole source of shelter for the community. It's nice to have it there. Now's a good time to do it, but, um, we don't have to make a decision on it today. We could, we could keep it the project and, and try to do it later if the money's still there, or if the funding's not available from another source.
That was something we asked about too, Brad. Do you know, like, emergency management or other kinds of agencies that would be willing to pay for it now?
And that's a good question. Skeeter, the Public Safety Committee with Mr. Oswood have to see if there's some kind of grant to say that. To pay for it now, you know how bureaucracy is. I would say most likely no, but I frankly don't know. Like I said, when we were at Sandy, the generator was delivered at 9 o'clock at night. By 6 o'clock the next morning, we had the town hall and probably a couple other buildings wired ready to go. And I had nothing to do with it but watch and say, and they said, "Don't touch that." I said, "Okay." So I mean, with the expertise and the relationships we have with Duke and RMC, I feel very confident that they would be more than willing, once they got their teams here, to help us, and I can't see spending $62,000 to do that.
So Terry, you're comfortable while, while we do some more research around this and asking those entities and safety committees to, to leave that out of the initial proposal this evening?
Agreed. And the generator that's still going to be on the building will get you power for kitchen, some kitchen equipment and, and general lighting in the building. So you'd have, it'd buy it some time.
Can I, I want to get Skeeter's opinion. I'm one voice, I'm not, I don't know everything. What do you think?
I think as long, I mean, when you call for that generator, they're going to ask if you have access first. If you don't have it, you're not getting it. So I think if you have the access, it's great. Go with that, like I said, it's a wish list. One thing that I want to mention, I don't know if we, I know we covered it in our meeting, um, one night Jim went dark. You couldn't see out. Is that generator still going to be the same? I mean, we had it.
We didn't have it.
Yeah, our personal jetpack generator, I think, needs to be upgraded. I think we talked about that from a public safety standpoint, but we don't need a 5,000 kilowatt semi-driven.
In the last year?
Yes.
Okay. Last year. So that generator didn't come on? Not Jim, it came on.
Is it going to be replaced or not? We don't know.
The generator is getting replaced, yes. It's an antique, but I think you had mentioned one option. It's kind of foreign, so.
Terry, prior to the meeting, I asked you, if, if we didn't have this hooked up all ready to go, and a generator was brought, is there a way we could tie it to the building? And you said no. So what?
Not without somebody like Duke.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so it's not impossible, it's just no until a day or two.
It's, "Don't touch that."
Right.
Because you're talking about a lot of power.
But, and also in New York, we had saltwater to deal with. This is, I, that one would probably much simpler.
And so Skeeter says, if you call for the, uh, generator, they have one, and you can't connect that right away, you don't get it, which means we don't have anything quickly that can be set up, which is more than our difficulty. I agree with Jennifer that, that if our building would be for the county or the, half the county, then there would be some more revenue sources they'll pay for, for the connection. It's, I mean, uh, when you look at how expensive it is compared to the rest, it's not a lot, but it would be a great benefit if it were ever needed. Agreed.
Talk about the gym lighting. Back in the corner there, battery-powered lights, we don't have that in the gym, that would get.
I'd have to look and see if their seats look like they have batteries because of the size of them. A lot of new ones we don't, we have hooked on, or they're on the back of our certain, so there's no battery in it, because of maintenance. And those, and those, I'll have to look. They should have come on, and so we'll have to find out what's going on.
I'd be confident.
We'll look into it. I can't explain it without, we can figure out what, what they want. So, yeah, you should imagine on dark, it would be in there, that's going to be a little scary person.
Kerry has the phone.
Yeah.
Always has. I'm sitting for now.
Does anybody have additional questions for Terry?
Terry, just real quick, we mentioned earlier that, um, we, in years past, there have been issues when the, um, heating and cooling had not been on correctly, and we lost equipment because of that. But you have a plan in place, or we won't have, we won't have cooling over the summer, but there will be humidifiers and stuff.
Correct. So, um, I was here when this building was built, and that summer, um, actually, that was the summer, I think, in March or so, it was 85 degrees outside. So, um, you start finishing, drywall in here, and it's too humid, makes them dry. So here, out in the main entries that you come in both of them, they were industrial size. They looked the size of a VW, they were dehumidifiers. We would do the same thing at high school if needed, but again, I don't, I don't put it in the base bid because I don't want you to, contractor, put $100,000 in there for something we don't know if it's going to be needed or not. So it's definitely use the contingency dollars. There's $185,000 contingency in that bid. That'll protect us in the case that we either need a bunch of fans or just keep moving air around. It's going to be like Brad talked about, how hot it is, even with cooling on now, we're not having anything. There's no windows to open, so it's simply open the doors and put fans in, and then we'll dehumidify the space if we need to. This, and we'll have to talk about it, we still need to talk about the, the abatement part of this, but the ceiling's going to be taken out of the middle hallway completely. So we'll have to, we'll have to be, keep an air moved in there for the contractor. There shouldn't be any students. Hopefully we'll be able to keep teachers out for the most part, so they're not coming into the building, but lay the new fans and dehumidifiers, uh, as needed throughout the space. But looking at the drawings, we're sectioning off the building as we work through it to try to minimize disruptions.
So, if I may, I'd like to make the recommendation to the board that we accept the bid by Herman and Getz, um, leaving out alternative A4 as a deduct at this point in time, and accepting the remainder of the bids, or remainder of the alternates as proposed.
And also A1, A6, two and five.
I think they're correct. Followed.
Yeah, A.
You just went two, three, and five.
Two, three, yes.
Agreed.
Yes.
So your recommendation is to leave the generator hookup?
No, take out the generator hookup.
Is this a take-out-the-generator hookup already in here?
That is actually a deduct. That'll come off of the 4.2.
So if you accept A4, then you deduct the 62,000.
Correct. You're accepting it to deduct.
So how do we want to phrase the motion then? You want two, three, four, and five?
I move that we accept the Herman Getz bid with the alternates two, three, and five, with four still being on the table to reconsider at a later date. Is that one?
If you leave it like that, then he tells the builder to plan for the generator hookup to be put in. If we accept the deduct, then there won't be a generator hookup, although later on, you can issue a change order and add it back in if you find another source of funding or something like that. So I believe, I think you want to accept.
With two, three, and five?
Yeah.
Two, three, and four.
Because it's saying we're taking it away.
Yes. The original bid would give, would give you the generator hookup.
Okay.
And if you accept the alternate, it takes the hookup away. Is that what you understand?
Correct. It's actually two, three, four, five, five states in there.
Five duct cleaning.
Yeah. So if you accept it, you're taking it out.
Taking it out. Okay.
Yes. So you're accepting two, three, and four.
Oh, okay.
We didn't accept five, then take one.
I move to accept the bid with two, three, and four.
Oh, we don't want these.
You do want to clean the ducts, right?
Right. Is that right?
Yes. If you want to clean the ducts, then you don't accept five.
Right. So I move that we accept this bid with alternates two, three, and four.
I second that. Okay, motion by Lisa and second by Steve.
I'm still confused. So here, just so I understand, if we accept this with alternate two, we're going to get the middle school charter?
Yes.
We accept it with alternate number three, we're going to get the curls in those units. We want to accept number four because it's going to take the generator hookup away.
Right.
And we decline alternate five because it's going to keep the duct cleaning in.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure I had it straight in my mind.
That was a long row.
Sorry. I don't want to vote for something I'm not clear on.
Exactly.
That's a better version of it, yes, that's it.
Is that correct? I'm trying, I'm not very smart, so I got to keep the layman's going.
I think, I think we got it.
Okay. So we have a motion by Lisa and a second.
Steve, second.
Any other questions on favor?
That's the middle school.
Mr. Terry, seven zero. Thanks, Ken, Terry.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We still need to discuss the asbestos. The good news was, the overall bid, we were about $280,000 under budget. So we got good numbers, good competitive numbers between those two contractors. And then for the abatement piece of it, we got four bids, Alliance Environmental, which is your contractor that takes care of the environmental stuff. We gave them our drawings. They used our drawings to put together a package. They received four bids for abatement. And I think everyone has that handout. So the low bid on that was EACI at $118,600. And that includes, the abatement items include ceiling tile. It's actually the dust on top of the ceiling tile from old insulation and things. Fireproofing, that also has asbestos in it, floor tile, and mastic, and then ductwork and insulation items. So all of those things need to be abated as we move through the building for the new HVAC system. This has been an ongoing thing, and most of the building's having to deal with abatement as we, as we work through renovation projects, so.
Now's the time, because you're going to be working those areas?
We have no option.
Okay, we'll need to have a motion to approve EACI contractor at $118,600 for asbestos removal.
And we're perfectly comfortable with this company?
Three or four of those companies have done work here before, and they are one of them. So we just, Alliance Environmental, which is your vendor for, you have a contract with them. They oversee all of it. So they ensure things go smoothly, and then they also perform their testing as needed for the building.
I move that we approve EACI at their bid for the asbestos removal.
Okay, motion by Brad.
I'll second.
Second by Jenny. You have a discussion? On favor? Okay, motion, Terry, seven zero.
Yeah, thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we have the appointment of Lindsey Cosbick, public library board member. Any questions on this? I believe that's a real appointment. Okay, this for the Kiwanah Union Township Public Library Board.
I give you a little bit of point when it comes to the public library board.
Okay, motion by Don.
I'll second.
And second by Lisa. You have a discussion? On favor? Okay, motion, Terry, seven zero. Okay, we need to personnel report. We have for hiring, Minnie Wang, RHS Chinese teacher, Jenica Stipler, Riddle Special Education teacher, Becky Burke, RHS Physics and Integrated Chemistry and Physics teacher, Annette Sasse, Columbia One-on-One Special Needs Instructional Assistant, Miranda Howard, Columbia One-on-One Special Needs Instructional Assistant, Bryce Roberts, Middle Instructional Assistant. We have a reassignment, Sabrina Prater, from RHS CAFE at Columbia Instructional Assistant in charge of temporary classroom safety, Kayla Sheets, from RHS Instructional Assistant in Tense Needs, to Middle Instructional Assistant. We have the resignations of Christie Brooks, Riddle Instructional Assistant and Bus Aid, Cindy Hart, RHS Building Tech, effective August 10th, 2016, Nicole Evans, RHS Integrated Chemistry Physics Teacher, Tracy Hart, Middle Instructional Assistant, Special Needs, and that's effective August 26th of 2016, and Shelby Sizinger, RHS Diving Coach. Then we have the high school, middle school, extracurricular recommendations, which is a lengthy list. And so everybody had an opportunity to go through all the extracurricular recommendations.
I appreciate Greg's work on that. Greg's trying to get his entire coaching staff together so that he's having conversations with them, setting expectations and guidelines, and trying to get those laid out for all, all of our seasons. So what you're seeing there are culmination of many conversations he's been having with the athletic coaches and supervisors for fall, winter, and the spring seasons.
I have a question about the ECA assignments. I know that we discussed this a little bit last year and looked back over to see what was really needed. Some of them, I would, like especially in departments that have one teacher per department, is there something that they go beyond that that's why there's an extra stipend for that?
And do you want to share how that works, especially at the high school with textbook adoption?
Sure. Yeah, whenever we do textbook adoption, they're in charge of that. A lot of these, even if there's just like one art teacher at the high school, when we do department meetings, they'll do department meetings throughout the district. So all our teachers, all the teachers throughout the district, we go over their curriculum to make sure that they're aligned.
Two people.
These coaching pay levels are the same as last year?
They are.
Except by ECA, right?
Correct. They were. Last year, we did open that up. We did try to clean up as best we could, the entire ECA schedule, and we readjusted that and realigned that at that point in time. But we're not proposing any changes at all for this.
Is there a reason for the, I appreciate, by the way, Mr. Marz's overview of the whole year. In doing so, it makes it easy to compare to. There are some programs that have substantially more money than other programs. And I know he's just new in this position, but do we, I, yeah, reasons for that? I know all of our coaches work hard, and none of them are getting rich off of this. I'm not, don't mean to say, pretend like that's what I'm saying, but can use that on some of them.
It's pretty common across the board of places. I mean, it's, I would say we're probably in line with a lot of others with what we pay and how many positions we pay.
Is, do we evaluate it all based on years of experience? I noticed our first year football coach is making the same as our, you know, state champion basketball girls coach.
It's pretty standard to have the year of those three positions.
I'm with you, Jennifer. I wince a little bit because swimming is a revenue sport. You pay lots of kids. It's real coaching, and it's about half, half the money.
And she's in charge of 30, 40 kids running the program? I don't know. The basketball numbers especially are very surprising to me, it means football.
I wish it were more accurate. Well, I'm not sure how to get there, or how many toes that would step on, or people that would go in, but yeah.
I mean, we're paying a K1, two basketball coordinator $900 a year. And it's not about that specific person doing the position, but the position itself, does that rise to $900 a year when we have a lot of elementary and middle school teachers that are doing extra things too, that are not being paid extra on here?
And we don't pay youth football or youth baseball.
We don't play soccer. We don't pay, we don't pay oils. I just, yeah. I've, I'm not saying I won't vote to approve it this time, but I think there's still work that needs to be done to realign these.
And I just mentioned slogan, but there are the.
Oh, exactly. And I'm not saying we should necessarily base it on the popularity of the sport, but like Mr. Marz says, that's typical, that's what's been done. But just because it's been done like that for years, you know, trends change. We have a lot, we have, we have a different proportion of kids in different sports.
And I see your point, but I also concur with Mr. Marz on some of the things that you don't see behind the scenes too. So that's something we could talk about in a study session or something like that.
Right. That's not something to redo tonight, but that was something, because you've done a nice job of laying it out over the whole year, and that's amazing to see. And then a quick question on our chemistry and physics teacher. Is the new hire a full-time position?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that is a change then from the position of work?
Does the revenue of sports bringing in affect salaries? I mean, like football, basketball, probably your two main revenue?
What you have in mind is basically.
Standard salaries across the state?
Yeah, probably less than 1% of the total budget. I mean, all that salaries are now is discussable between your teachers' association bases.
In frankment, in defense of Mr. Marz, if you were to look at surrounding school districts, I know a couple football coaches make a lot more money, as well as some of the other programs as well. So really, we're getting kind of a bargain, because if you look at the Casson and the Maui and the Eastern Plask guy when they advertise in the paper, kind of like, boy, I know I do it for free, but some of those people aren't doing it for very much either, so.
Well, and to go back to, I don't think any of our coaches are doing it.
Right, right. I know you didn't mean that.
And their per hour salary, any of them.
About 37 cents before taxes. Used to be anyway.
Like being on the school board.
Yeah, that makes it all worth flying.
Yes, and my, my comment, and I'm sure yours too, is nothing about our new athletic director. It's just an assistant that's in place.
Exactly.
Jan, I have a question. The health and PE area coordinator, is the woman who's stepping, yes, the woman stepping into that, to Katie's position, to cover Katie's position, is she going to then do the work?
You know what, I'll have to look at it, because I believe I still have to work on that.
Okay, you have a question? I need a motion to approve personnel report.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Sandy.
Second.
Second by Don. You have a discussion? On favor? Motion, Terry, seven zero. Thanks, Greg. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Sounds like there's work ahead of us to look through and consider.
Now, we'll move into job description approval of our director of facilities.
As Terry is wrapping stuff up, one of the conversations we've had, and Jim Swank has been very open and honest about, he has been with Rochester schools for years, and he has a wealth of information that we want to make sure that we are tapping into while he is still here and under contract. He has also shared that retirement is in his future. It's not in the near future, but in the next few years, he wants to strongly consider that. He has also shared that he feels overwhelmed and just feels like he's being trained on all of the new systems and the technology and the, and the computers that are going to drive these new HVAC systems is something that to spend money and training time with him is not going to prove to be fiscally responsible moving forward in the years to come. So with that in mind, Terry has, as well as Jim Swank, have looked over the job description Ted has as well, and I want to thank him to look at starting that transition process as the new system is going in. We want to make sure that somebody understands it from the ground up, while at the same time working side by side with Jim, who has years and years and wealth of experience. We, with some of the money and savings on bids and those types of things, we would propose that we would pay this director of facilities out of the bond money for the next two to three years as we're putting these systems into place, as Jim and his family are contemplating that retirement, and when it's right for him and for his family, and begin that process of moving in that direction.
So we want to be clear, because we've been very sensitive, and Mrs. Vane, she's been very sensitive in not wanting to add any positions when there have been other programming, important programming that has been cut, that this is not adding a new position per se into the general fund. This is a transition piece, and right now will be paid out.
It will be paid out of the bond money. Jim has been very supportive of it. About the time that he is ready to retire, this person should be on board. Our system should be in place, and then this person would absorb that pay slot where Jim's normally would fall.
You're absolutely correct.
That person can hit the ground running.
Exactly. And with the new facilities and the technology, we need somebody that's going to be ready as soon as the systems are ready.
Okay. You have a question?
When do you propose to advertise for this position, assuming of course it's accepted?
It's accepted. I'd like to start on that right away, because the systems are going to start going in, and it's important that they understand all components of it.
Does the new position encompass what Jim does now and then add one too?
I would say, and Terry, you may have to help me a little bit. I think that Jim spends so much of his time trying to troubleshoot these systems, trying to keep them up and running, trying to locate parts, all of those types of things, that a tremendous amount of his time is spent on something that's fruitless in the end. And I'm hoping that with the new system, if it's running appropriately and that person knows that system, they will be able to do some of those jobs that need to be done, those checkpoints that, you know, we've talked about getting up on the roofs and checking the drains and maintenance and maintaining the records and the documents, that in the end, it's going to be a trade in time and duties, if that makes sense.
Maybe while they're working together.
I'm sorry, while they're working together?
This position, when it's all transferred, when it's all, Jim retires, this position is going to do what Jim does now?
Correct.
And more? Or is it just what Jim does now? Is Jim trying to do all this now?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that it'll be the 21st century, Jim. He'll spend a whole lot more time on computers, less time on more.
Right.
But it'll be, but it will be the person in charge of building maintenance, bill, uh.
The custodial crew, the maintenance staff, the ordering of supplies.
And technology pieces across the campus.
So Jim 22.0.
And so there will be work that he does, that the new person doesn't do, that Jim does do now. Somebody else is going to have to do it.
No, we're hoping that it's not going to exist.
By fixing the systems, then this person should have.
Yeah, she just talked about it more, you know.
I can't remember more.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, easy analogy is, if you dig your 1960s and '72 really, basically, we'll get a car mechanic that worked on those cars, and think about what needs to work on a car today. That's, the biggest difference is technology, is the new guy's going to have to understand the technology behind it, but he shouldn't have to. If you've spent an hour with Jim, he's, he's with you for five minutes, and the rest of the time, he's running in circles, on the radio, "Got to go fix this. Got to run and see what's going on." Instead, the guy should be able to pull out his phone and say, "Oh, this is where we're starting." And to be able to, and to be able to pull up information instantaneously, you know? It's just two different worlds, and we hope to make everything more efficient.
But Don, there are still responsibilities. Jim's responsible for ordering all of the supplies. This person would be, would learn that process for ordering and maintaining supplies. He's responsible for all the personnel for maintenance across the district, so that person would learn that system and interview and be responsible.
Take over all that of it. So the one person managing the team will end up being a one person managing the team. It won't be a manager and an assistant manager, I think, maybe where you, where you put your.
And some of the time savings will be on new equipment that you don't have to run around and find the parts.
Well, just, he's been on fires every minute. With Ruby and Hot, it's just inputs for him. And I, because I set meetings with him all the time, and I get him for five minutes, and he's going to run, because he's been on fire. So just inefficient. It's due to age of buildings and technologies being used.
All right, we'll need a motion to approve the job description for director of facilities.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Jenny.
I'll second.
And second by Lisa. You have a discussion? On favor? Okay, motion, Terry, seven zero.
So the job description is Jim 2.0.
And I think if we posted that in the community, made that a sample, we were sent.
Okay, next item, approval of Michael Rohr's contractor. Okay, next item, approval of Michael Rohr's contract.
Michael, and I had an opportunity to speak, I believe it was earlier this week, and I am proposing that his contract, before it was a two-hundred-and-sixty day contract, we are looking at a two-hundred-and-thirty day contract for Michael, we talked about what that calendar might look like for him, just again, a change in how we're running busing routes, expectations, the, the age of buses, those types of things, and doing some research, I do believe it's a job that can be done with those two-hundred-and-thirty days within that timeframe, and, and he was comfortable after we sat down and spoke about attempting that for one year and looking at the calendar and how he plans and schedules those, those events around those two-hundred-and-thirty days.
Any questions?
So, I, I'm sorry, I don't have it pulled up right now. Is it just a one-year contract then?
It is a one-year contract.
I missed that detail, thank you.
Uh, need a motion to approve Michael Rohr's contract.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Sandy?
I'll second that.
And second by Steve, any discussion? On favor? Okay, motion, Terry, seven zero. Uh, next item, approval of Dan McCarthy's contract.
Dan and I also had an opportunity to sit down today and talk about contract, and he just finished out his first year of being the technology coordinator and, and working on instruction and everything, and I think that we build a plan moving forward to provide teachers with that technology support and kind of revolutionize how, how that works for the teachers and for technology, and would propose a two-year contract, the first year, this year, the salary being sixty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Any questions?
Is that the same amount of days?
It's the same amount of days and the same pay as before, and it would be a two-year contract, and we spoke about meeting every other week and, and working with building level principals and, and what that might look like, the process for rolling out new technology and innovation for teachers, and I think we're coming up with a pretty good plan.
Motion approved?
So moved.
Red?
I'll second that.
And second by Steve, any discussion? On favor? Motion, Terry, seven zero. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to other business, superintendent business.
Just very quickly, I've sent out information about the fall conference for the school board, and I've heard back, I know that Jimmy and Sandy do plan to attend and Dawn was not able to, but if the rest of you could let us know so that we can go ahead and make those reservations, you know? Okay. Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and make those then. And then just a reminder to the community, and with Greg here, we're working on tailgating this Friday night, and we want to get as many out here, first of all, just to socialize and fellowship as a district and then support the Zebra football team, while at the same time being here for halftime for the, the presentation of the award with Christina Hughes and John Alley and everybody back on Friday evening, so inviting the public to that forum and to come and tailgate with us. We're gonna start it at six o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Board, have any questions, comments? Anybody have noticed? Okay, if there's no objection, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks for coming.